Councilmember Park, do you have comments on item number three?
Thank you, Council President. I rise to offer comments today because I have had many concerns about this item, some of which I expressed in Budget Committee when I opposed the ordinance. At that time, my concerns really centered around the process and the outreach, and specifically that our policy committees were considering an ordinance before the public had even had an opportunity to share their concerns and register their protests at the mandated hearing here in council. We've now done that process, but honestly, I am still not satisfied. And I think this is all going to come as a blindside to ratepayers. I know that however many times we send an email or a notice, that message isn't always received. I put information about this out in my newsletter on several occasions. I talked about it in my weekly update. I posted about it on social media, and I'm sure others of you did too. But I still don't think that a majority of Angelinos know or understand what's in store on their bill next month. I also worry about this being yet another hit on working families who are already struggling to make ends meet. I worry about the impact on our small housing providers and what that does to affordable units on top of all the pandemic-related burdens we put on them. I'm also worried about the impact on so many small businesses, which are the backbone of our local economy. And on the other hand, as a steward of our coastline and our waterways, I personally see the catastrophic consequences of our failing infrastructure: sewer discharges, closing our beaches, sick and dying animals, piles of garbage up and down our coastline. It's disgusting, really, and shameful that we ever let it get this bad. I want a future where sewer discharges are an oddity of the past, where our beaches and our coastline are open for families and tourists across the region, especially in the hottest weekends of summer. And most importantly, I want a future where our ocean and our waterways and our marine life are healthy and thriving. I know you all want that, and I know our constituents do too, which is why if we proceed with this increase, that is the future we have to deliver. My expectation is that L.A. Sand is going to demonstrate the quality infrastructure that we are getting in exchange for this increase. I want our residents to see with their own eyes what they're paying for. So, L.A. Sand, as you break ground on some of these shovel-ready projects, please let us know about it so that we can communicate that out to our constituents. And finally, I want to reiterate my expectation to L.A. Sand and the CAO that no stone is to be left unturned in the search for grant opportunities to help mitigate the impact that these fees will have on our small mom-and-pop landlords and small businesses, and that's above and beyond the low-income subsidy that's already built into the framework. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Park. Well said.
A 22% increase that people are going to start seeing overnight. And that is a fundamental issue, in addition to how fractured the communications have been in not getting — I unfortunately don't believe that a lot of residents are informed about what they're going to see on their water bill as a result of these increases. It's why today I'm also introducing a motion that will help to modernize our Prop 218 process so that it isn't just reliant upon our newsletters or our individual communications to our constituencies. I think we need to have a more comprehensive approach to inform members of the public about what the actions are of this body or any other body when we talk about increases, when we talk about helping to mitigate what we know people are living through right now with the inflationary costs, with housing costs, with everything that they've been affected by. To tack this on at this juncture, I believe, is not just going to affect those on the fringes, those working families, or those senior citizens that are living and struggling to make ends meet. But of course, as you indicated as well, about the local business owners that have also been struggling to make it, those restaurants. We keep seeing every month new restaurants that are announcing their closures because it is challenging to make it all work. And the fact that we didn't still have — my biggest frustration with this whole process, with how accelerated it was, absent independent review, to me continues to be the biggest liability with this proposal. And it's why I continue to vote no. And colleagues, I continue to ask that looking ahead, that we really have to be far more thoughtful about the types of commitments that we are promising residents without the assurances that while we provide — while these types of assessments happen, that they are in fact guaranteed the deliverables associated with that assessment. And at this juncture, I don't know that we can confidently say that. We've got a lot of work ahead. We've got a lot of demands on our city workforce. And I'm really concerned that we won't fully be able to accomplish the amount of work based on the assessment that we are conducting here on this issue. And for that, I will continue to vote no.
I'm just going to say this. There are lots of things that this council wants the city government to do. There are a few things that we have to come to grips with the fact that we must do. And one of them is maintaining a sewer system that's functional. So I would say that this has not been an expedited or rushed process. This has been a delayed process. We should have been making these investments years ago to prevent sinkholes from developing in our streets, to prevent the discharge of sewage into our oceans, to keep people safe in the city of Los Angeles. We should have made these investments years ago. And so the time is now. It's never an easy vote when you have to tell people that they may need to pay more for what we deliver to them. But this is that time, so I'd ask for your I vote. So with that, let's open the roll. Councilmember Yaroslavsky?
Computer's not on.
Okay. If we can — Councilmember Yaroslavsky's terminal is not — is it not on at all?
No, it's black.
Okay, we can have ITA take care of that. But the roll is open, so let's open the — let's cast your vote, Councilmember Yaroslavsky. Aye. Councilmember Yaroslavsky is an aye. With that, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
Very good. Thank you.
Today, I stand before you with a deep concern about the proposed donation of two police dogs from Aldehorst International. The name Aldehorst is undeniably linked to Nazi history. It was the name of one of Hitler's bunkers. For Holocaust survivors and their families, these symbols awaken painful memories. In a letter, Councilmember Blumenfeld says he has received assurances from the company, LAPD, and others. Intent does not erase impact. Assurances do not remove the historical weight and trauma that the name Aldehorst still carries. This item passed the Public Safety Committee without discussion. None. This shouldn't settle Angelinos. We've talked about the antisemitism in these chambers, and I have to ask, to what extent should this City Council prioritize the Jewish community's safety? Does their emotional well-being mean nothing? By accepting this donation, the city risks minimizing Jewish trauma. It sends a message that the very names and symbols that evoke fear and pain can be disregarded once reassurances are given. Let me be clear, this isn't about the donation of two German shepherds. It's not about normalizing insensitivity to Jewish trauma. It's about not undermining the sense of safety for Jewish Angelinos. We as a city should not pick and choose whom we protect and how. We cannot risk embedding dangerous patterns of insensitivity in our institutions. I urge you to consider how this decision reflects on our commitment to justice and to vote no on this item. Thank you.
For the record, want to state that as Councilmember Hernandez was making an argument to the council, Mr. Herman walked into the chambers making animal noises that were audibly distracting from the council member's statement. So, Mr. Herman, I'm instructing you, sit down and be silent for the rest of the meeting, or you'll be immediately removed. And that goes to anybody else who's disturbing the conduct of the work of this council. All right. With that, do any members — any other members wish to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 17. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send item 17 forthwith.
Without objection, that will be the order.
Two remarkable individuals who I am sure you have all heard of on your morning commutes, sometimes with choice words about the performance of our jobs. For over a decade, Heidi Hamilton and Frank Kramer, or as most of us know them, The Heidi and Frank Show, have graced the airwaves as hosts of the premier morning show on 95.5 KLOS FM.
As Frank said, we grew up in Indiana, and I moved out here in 1997 because when I was a little girl, all I wanted is to be in Los Angeles. It was a dream. And for those of you who are here today, you probably remember that. Sometimes on the days where it's crazy traffic and it's so busy and nutty and you're mad at your boss, your job, or whatever, you've got to think back of the day that you were like, oh, my God, I'm moving to Los Angeles. And that was almost 30 years ago for me. And Los Angeles has given me my career, my best friends, my lifelong friends, and Los Angeles has given me my family. So I will forever be grateful to the city of Los Angeles for — like, to reiterate what Frank said, they made us. They made me, and they've given me such an awesome life, the great people of Los Angeles, and the Heidi and Frank fans. So, thank you. I still can't believe this. It feels like I'm going — my alarm's going to go off. I'm going to wake up, and I'm going to go, "Okay, I just had the strangest dream."
Yes, good morning. This is general public comment, and my name is Father Mark Hallahan, and I'm with Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, Episcopal priest. I live in District One. And our diocese is headquartered in District 14, Echo Park, with 25 parishes covering every council district. Our main tenet is to strive for justice and peace among all people and respect the dignity of every human being. For L.A. to be a bright beacon for the Olympics and ever after, you need to ensure that those behind the scenes who will make it shine, the hard-working service workers in hotels, in the airport, and restaurants, have the respect and dignity that includes a wage that they can live on. Largely due to your delay, full-time workers have missed out on an average of over $14,000 since last July, often the difference between staying housed and getting evicted. You've heard heartfelt stories of workers here, and we've seen Bena Council meetings, T-3 committees for over a year to urge you to raise the wage for tourism workers. Your due diligence will ensure success at all levels, so please get this done now. Thank you very much, and thanks for your service.
Hello, yes, I'm Diane Musano. I work at the Sky Chef in LAX, and I am part of the United Local 11.
Hace más de un año, se introdujo una póliza de aumento salarial para los trabajadores del turismo.
Yeah, a year ago, there was a policy introduced for the lifting of wages for tourist workers.
Esta demora nos ha afectado terriblemente a cada una de las familias, a cada uno de los trabajadores que trabajamos para el turismo.
Yes, and this delay has affected us terribly for all us workers who work — for the families of all us workers who work in tourism and hotels.
Los costos de la vida son muy altos.
Cost of living is very high.
Desgraciadamente, no solamente ha afectado a las familias de una manera económica, sino también emocional.
And has unfortunately affected our families, not just economically, but also emotionally.
Por los altos costos de la vida, la gente, nosotros los padres, nosotros los trabajadores, llevamos una crisis emocional.
And because of the high cost of living, us, the parents, or our kids, and our family members, we are suffering high emotional — high emotional damage because of this.
Thank you very much. Which name did you sign up under? Because I don't think I called any of your fake names. Which one was it?
Good morning, Mr. City Attorney. I heard — I heard an anonymous person called me Jamie Cusick, and then that is my name, Jamie Cusick, Mr. City Attorney. Please verify the name. Second is, I would like to speak on the agenda item 25, 26, 27. General Public Comment, continue, 27.
So you'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you very much, our interpreter and City Attorney. First of all, it's about 25, unsolved murder. Mr. City Attorney, as you already know, I am an illegal immigrant. So I came to the city as for the safety, as for my American dream. I want to achieve my American dream like you with safety. However, Mr. City Attorney, if I continue to see unsolved murder in the city of Los Angeles, Mr. City Attorney, how can I achieve my American dream the same way as you do? If I continue to be attacked, you know, to be killed, to be raped, and then I continue to see unsolved crime on the agenda, Mr. City Attorney, can you tell me how can I pursue my life, liberty, pursuit of happiness? How can I try to follow my American dream? That's what I'm here for. Safety is the priority. With number 25. Long Yan Qi Jiangshan Bei Wang Long Qi Jian Ma Chang Si Jian Qi Ru Shuang Xin Si Huang He Shui Meng Meng Er Shi Ni Zhong Heng Jian She Neng Xiang Kang Hen Yu Kuan Chang Dao So Xiang Duo Shao Shou Zu Zhong Hun Mai Gu Ta Xiang He Xi Bai Si Bo Jia Guo Ren Tan Xi Geng Wu Yu Xue Lei Man Kuan Ma Ti Nan Qiu Ren Bei Wang Ren Bei Wang Cao Qing Huang Chen Fei Yang Wo Yuan Shou Tu Fu Kai Jiang Tang Tang Zhong Guo Ya Rang Si Fang So, next item. It'll be item number 27. Item 27.
Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Jovan Houston. A general public comment. Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead. Hello, I'm an executive board member, and I represent workers at Airport — sorry, executive board member at LAX, representing 1,000-plus more airport workers. I have been coming down here to City Council over a year and a half now, waiting for you guys to pass the motion for a living wage. Airport workers like myself struggle daily. As you know, now the port is finally out, and it's time for you guys to make a decision. Airport workers need this. We have bills. We have rent. We're getting priced out of the homes that we live in. The economy is booming now. The city of Los Angeles is booming now. It's a tourism place. Why not support airport workers? Why not give them the living wage that they deserve? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Good morning. My name is Amalina Ramirez. I'm going to be a general public comment on Article 190229 S2.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. My name is Amalina Ramirez, and I work at McDonald's here in Los Angeles. I'm here to ask you to put Article 190229 S2 on your agenda for the next meeting so that we can ensure that every fast-food worker knows their rights. For too long, my colleagues and I have been uninformed of our rights. At my job, we deal with several safety issues. The walk-in freezer is very dangerous and slippery, people falling and getting locked inside. Improper use of equipment. We also deal with angry customers who threaten us with bodily harm just for doing our jobs, and our immediate supervisors ignore said threats. We often have to climb the shelves to reach the top items, risking our safety. Again, we don't have proper equipment. For the longest time, I didn't know that I could do something about these issues. It was only after I was informed of our rights that I learned that I had options to ensure my safety. Unfortunately, many of my colleagues at my workplace don't know of their rights, and many, many thousands of fast-food workers as well.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. I'm going to call a few — as our next speaker is coming up, before he begins, I'm going to call a few more names. I'm going to call a few more names now, please. I appreciate the applause, but it's delaying our meeting. Let's not do that, please, if we can, because I want to call more names, and I want you to hear your name when we're called. Angela White. And, Mr. City Attorney, you previously advised at a previous meeting that those who sign up under multiple fake names are inherently disrupting the meeting. So I would like to note that someone named Shaniqua signed up, and that is usually one of the fake names that's used by the gentleman who was singing earlier. So if there is someone by that name, you're welcome to come up. If there is not, that indicates to me that he has signed up under multiple fake names yet again after being warned. Okay, next speaker, please. Mr. Herman, sit down and be quiet.
Mi nombre es Laura Esquivel.
My name is Laura Esquivel.
He trabajado en el aeropuerto de Los Ángeles por 22 años y soy membro de USWW.
Yes, I have worked in LAX for over 22 years, and I am a member of USWW.
Yo estoy aquí luchando por un sueldo digno y seguro médico accesible para los trabajadores del aeropuerto y los hoteles.
Yes, I am here fighting for a livable wage and for health care for the workers in the tourist industry as well as the airports.
Ya que el costo de vivir en Los Ángeles es cada día más alto.
Being that cost of living in Los Angeles gets higher and higher every day.
Simplemente no alcanza con un empleo en el aeropuerto.
And it is simply not enough with just having a job at the airport.
Mi familia y yo ahorita vivimos de cheque a cheque.
And my family and I are living check to check.
En realidad estamos en una emergencia de perder la vivienda.
And honestly, we are at risk of losing our place of dwelling.
El reporte público confirma que nosotros los trabajadores
And the public report confirms that us, the workers
Llevamos más de 500 días diciendo
Have more than 500 days of saying
Que los trabajadores del aeropuerto necesitamos un aumento y un cuidado de salud accesible.
That us airport workers need a livable wage or a raise in wage and a health care plan.
Hemos esperado más de 500 días y no estamos dispuestos a hacerlo ni un día más.
We have waited for more than 500 days, and we cannot go and stand to do it one day more.
Necesitamos que los concejales pongan esto en la nómina y lo debatan ahora mismo.
We need that the council members put this on the agenda and have to debate it right now.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Mark Gaynor, Member of Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. 55% of Angelinos are rent-burdened currently, and the rates at which their wages are increasing is not enough to keep up with that. That's leading to displacement. It's leading to overcrowding in their housing. And the kind of work that tourism workers have to do does not provide them with the financial security that they need to be able to retire well. It does not provide them with the security to make sure that the challenges that they are faced with in their work, the sort of physical tolls that takes on them, will allow them to be treated with dignity by their employers. The industries that they work in generate massive revenues, and the workers that generate that deserve a fair share. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Reverend Frank Wolf. I'm here with Clued Justice. I'm wanting to speak on general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I live in District Eight. I serve the Echo Park United Methodist Church in District 13, and I serve La Plaza United Methodist Church in District 14. I'm here today because during the eight years that I served in Echo Park, I have found that the neighborhood is changing as more and more people are finding it impossible to be able to continue to live and work both in central Los Angeles because of the cost of living. And because of this, people are moving out of the city. They're moving away and having to travel long distances in order to be able to work. So I'm here today saying that now the city legislative report has been brought in. It's time for us to move forward on a living wage for tourism workers and workers at the airport. It's time for us to consider this next week at the travel, trade, and tourism meetings so that it can be considered by the entire City Council as quickly as possible. We simply cannot wait any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Julieta Garcia, and I work for the fast-food industry. And I'm here to ask for the next meeting agenda. Have on it our item number 170229 S2. That requires all fast-food workers to be trained on their rights.
Para poder saber sobre nuestros derechos, ya que muchos trabajadores de comida rápida
To know of our rights, given that a lot of the fast-food workers
Aún desconocen de los derechos que por ley tenemos
Are unaware of the rights that they have by law.
Es por ello que hoy hacemos acto de presencia acá con ustedes
Which is why we're here with you today.
Para que se pongan la mano en la conciencia
So that you can analyze your conscience.
Y nos puedan apoyar con este proyecto de ley
And that you can help us with this law.
Para que dejemos de sufrir
So that we may stop suffering.
Atropellos por parte de nuestros empleadores.
And that our employers will stop taking advantage of us.
Y así poder ir a nuestros lugares de trabajo
So that we may go to our workplaces.
Seguros y confiables.
Safe and confident.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
And, Mr. Herman, which name did you sign up under?
Shaniqua.
Okay, so then I'm — I'm going to, again, point out for the record that Mr. Herman has used multiple fake names to sign up today. I'm going to go ahead and let you speak, but you're warned again that multiple fake names will be considered in his — be quiet. Be quiet. Stop talking. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Herman is now disrupting my ability to provide instructions, so he's ordered removed from the chambers pursuant to Rule 12. Mr. Herman, sit down. Leave the chambers, please. Leave the chambers. You are excluded. You're excluded from the chambers. Have a good day.
Mr. Herman, you were warned earlier in this meeting
Have a good day. You're ordered excluded from the chambers pursuant to Rule 12. Leave. 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 You're continuing to delay the meeting and disrupt the work of this council. Leave the chambers immediately. All right, I'm going to call some more names. Andrew Grabner, Donald Harlan, Dexter O'Connell, Mid-City Neighborhood Council Andrew Grabner, Donald Harlan, Dexter O'Connell, Mid-City, Mid-City Neighborhood Council, Anne Spindler. For the record, Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt the meeting by shouting out. So, Mr. Herman, please leave expeditiously. Because I ordered you to. Leave. I don't care what you, I don't care. You've been ordered to leave and you're continuing to disrupt the meeting.
Mr. Herman, you were, you were warned during the presentations for disrupting the presentations. You also continued to speak while the council president was trying to give instructions during your public comment. I could not hear the pub, the, the council president and he's right behind me because of what you were saying.
Mr. Grabner, I'm sorry. You're gonna have to wait just a second. You're just gonna have to wait for a second, Mr. Grabner. I apologize, but we have to remove Mr. Herman from the chambers. Okay, for the record, Mr. Herman is yelling Trump at the top of his lungs, continuing to disrupt this meeting, yelling Trump. Mr. Herman, leave the chambers immediately. Okay, he's outside the door and I can still hear his voice. All right. Mr. Grabner.
All items, general comment.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Thank you for your patience. Go ahead.
All right, so we have a motion from Deleon in Bloomingfield. Fuck Deleon. He shouldn't have anything on the agenda. I don't know where the council is, so I'm not really sure I'm giving comment to the council since they're not here.
Well, you'll speak to the agenda. You, you, you don't have the ability to make quorum calls. Speak to the agenda, please.
But, you know, so I'm not really sure I'm getting my ability to address the council here. So we have twenty-four, which is Kevin Deleon motion, no on that. He shouldn't have anything on the agenda. He needs to resign and he's gonna lose reelection. We have twenty-five. That's a reward offer, reward money for snitches, um, from, it's something that happened in 2020. You're never gonna find the person. It was four years ago. You, you're, how are you, you really think you're gonna find someone who did a, something four years ago? You, you've had worse. You've had like seven, eight, fifteen years. You're never finding the person. It's, it's been like a year or two. Just, you're never gonna find them. And we, we don't need to give reward money for snitches. Same with twenty-six. And, let's see. We have item twenty-eight. That's lighting up City Hall from Sotomartinez. Uh, we don't need more money for lighting up City Hall. It's at least this time you're lighting it up in advance, or you're paying in advance, unlike usually when you just pay in the past. We have, let's see. Let's go to general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
So today, the, the council is going, the Public Safety Committee is going to consider another motion to, you know, try to criminalize protesting anti-genocide, you know, protest genocide and protest, you know, illegal land sales and things like that. And you keep claiming you're fighting antisemitism, but no, you're fighting anti-Zionism and anti, you know, genocide stuff. If you want, the, as far as fighting antisemitism, today the council approved another donation of a dog from a kennel named after the bunker that Adolf Hitler hid in at the end of World War Two to avoid being captured by the Allied Forces. Yeah, that's what you approved today, a donation from that firm. So why do you keep doing that? You claim you're fighting antisemitism. Why are you getting, uh, dogs from a kennel named after Hitler's bunker?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Yes, thank you. Dexter O'Connell, uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to first extend an invitation to the council members who voted no on item seventeen to rush Ashana at my house. I am a good cook. You will be fed well. Um, to those who voted yes on item seventeen, I would just ask you, if it was fourteen eighty-eight kennels and he said it was because he started breeding dogs on January fourth, nineteen eighty-eight, or if it was James Crow kennels because that was his favorite uncle's name, would you still have accepted the Nazi dogs? Um, it's really, really unfortunate that folks are out here talking about protecting the Jewish community and not standing up for their Jewish brothers and sisters in Los Angeles who are, um, understandably worried when a name closely associated with the Holocaust is the name on the kennel that the police dogs are donated from. Um, please be more careful with that sort of thing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
So you're gonna tone it down today. Oh, I don't want to get kicked out. Number one, fuck number one in the asshole. Twenty million dollars. For what? For Fatso Amelda Padilla and her fraudulent housing? Nobody's gonna be able to afford this shit. Look at this panorama view apartments. Oh, I hear a buzzer. What, what is that? Oh, that's one of the council members ankle bracelets. Oh, okay, please ignore that. So we have the panorama view apartments on Van Nuys Boulevard, a certified American fucking shithole. I wouldn't put a dollar into that project. How about you? I don't drive through there. I'm scared. Yes. Now we get to number twenty-two. Another one for that little Tortuga, Amelda Chinchilla Padilla. On Van Nuys Boulevard again, the health fair. If you want to be healthy, stay away from Van Nuys. Stay away from that fucking shithole. Then you won't walk over the feces and the urine and the skeebies and they won't crawl up on your leg and bite you and cause you illness. Ew, ew. Yes. Oh, and thank you, unelected one, for walking in front of me and interrupting me. Now we get to number twenty-three. Bourbon Bleed, doing a good job. Yes, tagging removal through December. Very good, Bob. Your fucking district is looking a lot better. And I have good news, people. I have withdrawn my public motion to change the name of Tampa Avenue to Drug Addict Avenue because Bob's starting to clean it up. Goat puppet benefiting your life. Then number twenty-four, here we go. It's time for Kevin. Blight removal. Yes. The entire CD fourteen is a blight. Now hopefully when Kevin gets reelected and our latest polling, uh, sorry, Unicef shows Kevin up as five points. Once he gets reelected, Kevin, you can bulldoze the entire CD fourteen and redevelop it. Let's give, let's give him a hand. That was Weezer's dream. Very good. Yeah. See, Kevin is simply continuing the Weezer agenda secretly and covertly and quietly. That's why he was in that meeting with, with Nury, cuz he was gonna tell Nury of his plans and then it got recorded. Yes, again, shitholes will never change. And then CD seven and twenty-five, Devon Pledger was murdered. Well, look at the shithole he was murdered in. Do you think it would be Brentwood? No, we don't support this reward.
General public comment.
Not for the general comment. Well, according to the ACLU, there Armenian goat herder, you are not required to sign up to speak at this meeting at all. So if you're not required to speak, required to sign up to speak, then how can you be disrupting the meeting for signing up to speak? Show me there, uh, pumpkin head. Show the law that says if you sign up more than one speaker card at a meeting, it's a disruption. You show me the case. I have it right here. No shit. Yes, it's called the United States of America versus the LA City Council, where they charge the city council with fifty-five counts of conspiracy and obstruction. More to come in twenty twenty-four. You're going to prison, do you understand? Yes, but you'll sit in those chairs and remember, uh, Current Price has to start ratting some of you out because he doesn't gonna spend the rest of his life in state prison and he doesn't want to do that. Finally, fuck you, Paul Krikorian, you piece of shit.
Your time has expired.
This is Richard Serrano, General Public Comment.
Good afternoon. You have one minute. Go ahead.
The hypocrisy of Monica Rodriguez getting that award when she was deplunder police in two thousand twenty. To get that recognition, shout out, like I said, a spit tongue, like a serpent. All the city council people, you guys wasted the city's time. Nobody, and you guys were all on TV today. Nobody was paying attention to anyone in that chamber today. So if you're gonna do that, then maybe two hundred and forty thousand dollars is way overpaid for people that can do it for a lot less and really do care. Smoke and scan, thank you for the support. It's not about me. It's about the city of LA. Get some people in there that really want to care, not the people, Monica Rodriguez, uh, Krikorian, you guys just got the light rail going over there.
Cola, your time has expired.
General public comment, please.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Los Angeles Council in regard to the regular ten AM meeting on September fourth, twenty twenty-four. The Los Angeles City Council must engage in fair and open meeting as mandated by the Brown Act. Essentially, the Brown Act is reinforcement for the law of the land, the US Constitution. By breaking quorum during this meeting and conducting public comments, the Los Angeles City Council denied a fair public hearing to the members of the public who spoke during that period. If these meetings, public comment period for the items listed for public hearing are conducted without quorum, they are not true public hearings. If these meetings are not true public hearings, then the business conducted was illegitimate and illegally voted on during the September fourth, twenty twenty-four regular ten AM Los Angeles City Council meeting. Now you cannot tell the public they can't call, call out on quorum. If quorum is not held, it's the public's responsibility to call that out. You do not have.
Cola, your time has expired. Next caller.
Sit quietly, okay? While we ask once again on the record for all of the expenses incurred by the city of Los Angeles for the council members and their staff to attend the twenty twenty-four Paris Olympics and the pregame show and the post-game finale, including the Paralympics and including the mayor of Los Angeles. And Groot, I know you're gonna say we don't handle the mayor of Los Angeles, so David Michelson, CC him on this oral public record act and let's get that stuff. It's not to be difficult. We're not upset. We just want to see how our council leadership spent the last couple months while they load up these agendas and blow through as if they are somehow not even connected to the people who come down and tell them what's going on. It's just, it's the shame fullest, and that's not a word, but the most shameful group, group we've ever encountered in all of our advocacy.
Cola, your time has expired. Next caller.
This is Ruth. I'm unhoused. Um, I want to speak on the RV operations. Um, this, there was a recently a homeless emergency account that proposes to spend, uh, three, over three million dollars burning a metro public parking lot that's more than an acre into a private LAPD official police garage so that they can keep, um, confiscated RVs that belong to vehicle dwellers in the lot. And it's also going to take money from the city's general services homeless, um, like a earmark for homelessness. This process of confiscating vehicle dwellings creates unsheltered homelessness. And when LAPD is taking money away from homelessness and using it to make parking in a public metro-owned parking lot illegal, that is a situation that creates more homelessness.
Cola, your time has expired.
Hi, can, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, all available items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
All right, so we have, um, twenty million dollars to acquire, rehabilitate and develop eighty-nine units. Um, whenever we, whenever we propose this as a solution to end homelessness, we always hear that we don't have the money for that. We don't have the money for that. We don't have the money for that. And you know what that sounds like? Sound like bull spit. Someone, someone said yesterday that, you know, I gotta work on my cursing, so bull spit. You get a vulgar sound effect to go along with it. Um, it's ridiculous, you know? Money pops up out of nowhere when it's for something that is probably gonna pay somebody behind the scenes that is a friend of CD six or whomever. There's a lot of, you know, talk out there that CD six office does a lot of weird business deals and that all of these are favors and that different licenses and acquisitions are done really in the favor of private interest, not in the public good. So that's something to think about. When the public says a lot, and all of the public says something, you might want to take heed, you know? Like, I, I don't understand. Like, what is the point of a census?
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item number one.
Okay, thank you. Um, don't run my time though while you're interrupting me, please. Uh, item twenty-two is a, is a, is a permit for Northeast Valley Health Corporation. Um, like I was saying, no one trusts any of these deals that are going on with any of these items. Um, you have people that are doing all kinds of shady shit. And when the public is coming out and speaking against these things, you really need to pay attention. Uh, you're not sitting in your seats while we talk about these things and it's really disgusting. And it makes, it makes the public angry. You know, you have item twenty-three here about, uh, bonds to, to, to use for graffiti abatement. The public is constantly begging and begging and begging for help with graffiti, but then you pour money into other shit. You pour money into like, uh, creating random spots where no one can park anything and it just sits there empty. And it's like, okay, you could, you could, you spent money and burned it into thin air. You could have spent that money doing graffiti abatement, but instead you have to depend on somebody else throwing the money up, you know, accepting a bond to do graffiti abatement, cuz you won't put the money yourselves, which is really gross, because you'll use our money to defend, uh, abandoned developments that are owned by not the city. And then you won't even use your own discretionary funds to take care of graffiti half the time. So it's really gross. It's really disgusting. It's pissing everybody off. Um, I'm not a homeowner. I'm not a business owner, but they seem pretty mad and they're the ones with the guns, not me. I don't own any, anything, anything crazy like that. You know, you hear Candido, fifty, he has fifty guns. I, I wonder how many guns all these other homeowners have and business owners, you know? They gotta defend their community and shit. I get it, you know? I don't agree with them a lot, a lot of things, but I get it.
This isn't on the agenda, but your general public comment starts now anyway.
Yeah, okay. Um, so like you've been hearing, uh, from both homeless, housed and business and homeowners alike, all month, and it's only the tenth that the city council doesn't pay attention to them. You had like the Asian American Hotel Owners Association, like, all there. You had, you had AAHA and it was ah ha 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 from the council members. They weren't even paying attention. Today you have none of them paying attention. I, i, it's crazy. This is the kind of stuff where they preach all that stuff about democracy, you know, whether you're conservative or you're liberal, whether you're leftist, right, whatever. You, you gotta put all that shit aside and look at what's happening here. They all talk all this shit, but in the end, what are they doing? And then look at Unicef and Hugo, you know, doing their shit, like how when you're in a gang, you gotta rob somebody for everybody and show how tough you are. You know, Unicef is trying to cut down on the meetings, jumping on the motion with Monica Rodriguez to cut down, uh, board, uh, board meetings down and also in, uh, put in term limits for neighborhood councils. It, it's like, you know.
Cola, your time has expired. Thanks very much. Next caller, please.
Thank you there, brother. And I also like to begin by saying, you know, fuck Candido. But anyway, the other day I was down on Figaro with this chick and, um.
So neither Candido nor what's happening on Figaro are on our council agenda today. So you can speak to the agenda items or you can go straight to general public comment?
Well, I have a better idea. How about if you let me and Mr. Pumpkinhead take care of that and you sit back there and shut the fuck up? How about that?
Okay, you, okay, you can go to general public comment. He'll have one minute for general public comment.
Ask Marty Whitey, brother. That, thank you there. Thank you there. You're a big help. You help a whole lot. Anyway, shout out to the Spokane community. Anyway, as I was saying the other day, I was down on, on Figaro with this chick and I paid her five dollars to let me examine her, um, turkey cutter with my baby batter dispenser and it got pretty ugly down there.
So again, you know the rules. We go through this every single day.
Yes, sir.
You need to connect this to something that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So this is your only warning.
Understood. Understood. Well, thank you for the warning there, brother. Sometimes it's needed there. Anyway, you know, um, you know, um, basically what I'm trying, you know, um, I was trying to understand what's going on down there, you know, you know. This is what happened, Larry. You see what happened? This is what happens when you try to fuck a stranger in the ass, Larry.
All right, that's it. That's it. Next caller, please. That's it. He's done. Next caller.
Public comment.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, you're disrupting the meeting, so that's the end of that call. That's the end of that call. That will close public comment on all agenda items and close general public comment.